Welcome, everyone. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting for February 7th, 2024. This meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn cable television. Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right. Thank you, Dr. McCrillis. Welcome, everyone. We will move on to Citizens' Comments. Is there anyone here for Citizens' Comments? Seeing none. We'll move on to Special Recognitions.
None tonight.
None tonight. Okay. And I will seek approval of the minutes from January 17th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 17th, 2024.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we do have both reps here today, so I will turn it over to the two of you for your report.
Hello. Sorry, sorry, we're late. We hit every red light on the way.
No worries.
Um, so I know you're already probably gonna hear about this in about five minutes. First thing I'd like to talk about is We the People. Huge win for us, in my opinion. Very proud. We're all very proud. Auburn came in second overall, which is very good because the school that came in first takes this very seriously. Not that we don't, but they, there's like contracts involved and stuff. And our top-scoring team for Auburn was Unit 5, captained by Lexi Sins, who you'll hear from in about a minute, so I won't take too much away from her. Um, and then I'll send it to Molly to talk about the sports.
So for Swickle, we won the Swickle Championship for track. It was really exciting because boys and girls won. Have some track athletes here, Alex and Vinnie. A lot of school records were also broken, so that was really exciting.
Cool.
The spring season is also coming up for a lot of sports. Mr. Auburn is also coming up soon, March 21st, so keep an eye out for that. There's a polar plunge for Rockets to Rockets actually taking place at the middle school over here, and that's gonna be on March 22nd. And then for school, the winter carnival is coming up, and we're doing hallway decorating this Friday, as well as games next Friday at an assembly for our send-off for Brick.
Wow. That guys are very busy, busy. Yeah.
And it looks like there's still time if the Auburn School Committee wants to sign up to do a polar plunge team.
Oh, you know, I was just thinking, that sounds like something I should do, but...
And if you need a photographer or videographer, I'm right here. I'm in photography club. Don't worry, I got you covered.
I wanna know where they're polar plunging there.
Isn't that the...
Yeah. So they're putting like a big tub of water, like a pool, in the back, and you don't have to plunge, you can also hold towels, but like signing up and raising money just to spread awareness is a really good cause.
Okay. We'll happily hold a towel.
Yeah. Do we have like administrators or anyone exciting doing this plunge?
I'm afraid I'll have to...
There are people. Alright.
Yep. I've heard it's very good for you.
Some of us are waiting because then we get soaked later in the year, so we...
Oh, that's right. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, I think I'll sit that one out, but if any of you...
I'm really good at holding towels.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Something for everyone.
I think it is kind of a big deal to have them bring that pool to us and everything.
Of course, yeah.
I think last year it happened at Polar Park, if I, if I remember correctly. So this year it's a big year that it's actually here.
It's an, it's an honor to have them
Yes.
Bring it to you.
Awesome.
It's fantastic.
Yep.
So we also have, there was an eighth-grade welcome presentation last week from six to eight. There was a welcome video, which was made by Kaylee Papier-Ski, Isadora Johnson, and Molly Campbell, and they won, there was a whole contest, and they won that, so they played it for the eighth-grade parents. There were curriculum presentations and booths set up showing each of the clubs that were available, so you got to talk to the parents and see whose parents were signing them up for what, which is always fun. The senior class is hosting a dodgeball tournament fundraiser scheduled for February 29th. It's six to eight people, a team, and it's 20 bucks per team, so totally doable, and it raises money for the senior class for our fun trips that come at the end of the year. The juniors are doing the Disney Breakfast fundraiser in the beginning of March, which is my personal favorite. I did that last year with a bunch of my friends, and it's silly, but you do it, and the little kids are there, and it's the cutest thing, and I, I remember I went out in public and just like the next day or whatever, and one of the kids recognized me.
Aww.
He's like, "Oh, my God, what are you doing?" It was the cutest thing, and I was like, "Don't make me emotional."
Were you a princess?
I was, I was Belle.
Belle. I was gonna say, that's perfect.
Yeah. It was so cute.
Through the chair, that happened to my daughter when she was little. She saw Jasmine at Bentley's, and it was, it made her weekend.
It really does. There's like, they give you notes and they sign, it's a, it's
Really cute.
Just a really cute, really fun thing.
Awesome.
And I think that's it for our...
What was the date on that breakfast?
It'll be the beginning of March. I don't know that they've set a date yet. It's usually on the weekends, and I believe they do it in two or three waves.
Okay.
But you buy a ticket ahead of time.
All right. Good. Awesome. All right.
I'm gonna leave ya talking about spring sports, getting like it's approaching.
Gotta go so fast. Fun flies. I know. All right, well, that was a great report. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there is a little alternate here for the student spotlight this evening. It is not the ADL peer training group, but we do have our representatives from the We the People organization. So we have Mr. Kennard, Mr. DeLong Champ. If you'd like to come up and introduce and kick us off, that would be great.
Super excited about this.
Can I touch this? Is this...
You probably should.
Shred lightly.
I'll lean. Girls, you were fantastic. I feel like you have like maybe a career pathway. So, good evening. It's great to see you guys all tonight. I have the pleasure of introducing students from our AP Government Class, which you see some of them here in front of you, as well as Mr. Kennard and Ms. Paget, who have been working extremely, extremely hard over the last six weeks, preparing our students to participate in the We the People competition. And I'm proud, I know that Bella mentioned that we did fantastic, but I am, they, it was even better than fantastic. So with that being said, I'm gonna give the floor over to Ms. Paget and Mr. Kennard to talk a little bit about it.
Thank you all for having us here this evening. We are joined by some of our students, and we have Vinnie and Alex and Morgan and Gia and Jordan and Lexi. Bella is also on We the People as well, so she has the double role of getting to speak maybe twice tonight. Super proud of our students. They did an amazing job of representing our school and the Auburn community at the Edward M. Kennedy Institute, which is in Boston, right next to the JFK Presidential Library. The competition happened on January 27th, and during this time, students simulate congressional hearings, and so what that means is they are asked questions with a prepared statement, and Amy will pass out the questions to you all, at which time they give a four-minute speech, and so we'll see a sample of what that looks like this evening. Then they are going to be asked eight minutes of random follow-up questions, and so students have no preparation besides just, again, general studies. They don't know what the questions are going to be ahead of time, and so they're peppered with questions for eight minutes, and then they're given feedback. We had six units go with 42 students total, and unit sizes range from about six to seven students, and the topics range from the philosophical traditions of the American constitutional system to modern issues facing, facing the United States. So, super proud of the students. Again, they worked extremely hard, a lot of time after school, and a lot of time on weekends, preparing, even on snow days, preparing as well. So again, super proud of them. So our sampling tonight will be Unit 5, who won Best Unit for our school, and that was captained by Lexi, and so Lexi and her unit will present, and then we'll also hear afterwards, you guys can ask them some questions about their experiences, and we'll have them come up to the microphone. So if you guys wanna get into your seats and prepare a speech. You wanna say it?
Or just, or just tell them what they're watching.
Just making sure, just making sure you saw it.
Yeah, you can pull those chairs up. That's fine.
Do you want me to move the mic for them?
Instructions, right?
Yeah.
So the order of events is the judges will walk into the room, and the students will stand up, and then the students will sit back down. And then the judges will introduce themselves, and they'll say, "Hello, my name is so-and-so", and then the students will introduce themselves, so I'll let them take over.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. We'd like to thank our teachers, Mr. Kennard and Ms. Paget, helping us prepare.
Speak up.
Prepare for today's competition. My name's Lexi Sins. I'm planning on going to Virginia Tech and majoring in international public policy and civil engineering.
Hi, my name is Vincent Miles. I plan on attending Bryant University and studying marketing.
Hi, my name is Alex Morganante. I plan to attend at Endicott College, studying health science.
Hi, I'm Morgan Ryan. I will be attending Clark University, and I'll be majoring in political science.
Hi, my name is Gia Patel. I'm a majoring in data science and WPI.
Okay, so they will be reading Unit 5, Speech 2, and I will read the question. "The 2022-23 school year has been marked to date by an escalation of book bans and censorship in classrooms and school libraries across, across the United States. To what extent, if any, do these bans limit students and teachers' freedom of speech? How should schools determine student access to certain books and online materials? Who should determine whether certain books should be banned or access to them should be restricted, and what criteria should they use?" You may begin.
Thank you. New English Canon, the first banned book, was removed by the Puritans in 1673 because it critiqued Puritan customs. Since before the United States was even founded, unconventional practices have resulted in book censorship.
School-wide book bans restrict students from having educational liberty. Curriculum varies widely by state, and teaching professionals should be able to use their discretion on the literary value of resource. Intellectual freedom necessary in students' ability to access content should be guaranteed by the First Amendment.
Restriction of curriculum prevents freedom of education. However, explicit content may be restricted if it does not take away from students' understanding of the world around them. Topics that people deem uncomfortable challenge convention by expanding the brain into different perspectives.
Jackie Bellis v. Ohio indirectly defined obscenity with the famous quote from Justice Potter's suit, quote, "I know it when I see it." Explicit content can be difficult to define, and local interpretation should be considered.
Oddly, when books are banned, they generally become more popular. Recently, 48% of commonly banned books contain violence, while 42% discuss issues such as mental health, bullying, suicide, substance abuse, sexuality, and puberty. Parents feel uncomfortable with the students, with the children discussing serious controversial topics.
Books as the anarchist cookbook have no place in schools. However, other controversial topics related to teenage life can produce great civil discourse, and differing opinions create a sense of reliability, ensuring that everyone feels heard. Students having the ability to form their own opinions furthers their understanding of prominent issues the nation faces.
Island Tree School District v. Pico left behind a murky precedent when five justices ruled that banning books infringed on students' First Amendment rights. However, the reasons differed. What was clear from the ruling is that school boards have room for judgment, but not free authority to ban books, as they can restrict books for reasonable purposes, leading to various policies across the country.
Justice William Brennan Jr. wrote, quote, "Local school boards may not remove books from school library shelves simply because they dislike the ideas contained in those books, and seek by their removal to prescribe what should be orthodox in politics, nationalism, religion, or other matters of opinion."
In case v. Unified School District, 1995, the Olathe Kansas School Board voted to remove the book Annie on My Mind, a novel written about lesbian teenagers due to, quote, "educational unsuitability." The federal courts ruled that the school board violated students' First Amendment rights.
Throughout history, many banned books relate to differing identities. Removal of books are racist history representation and various perspective for students. As Feathers Douglas once said, "Once you learn to read, you'll be forever free."
There have been 3,362 instances of book bans recorded nationwide throughout the most recent school year. Some banned books include The Killer Mockingbird, Harry Potter, and Charlotte's Web. This is a major concern in schools, as banning books subsequently limits students' educational liberty, inhibiting students' educators' freedom of speech.
Different states possess varying beliefs on what they deem acceptable, based on various factors such as cultural diversity, historical events, and regional traditions. Determinations for student access to certain books or online materials should be set by grade level, elementary, middle, and high school. While young children should not have access to harmful material, balancing First Amendment rights and controlling censorship towards certain books for appropriate ages is beneficial to the younger generation of students.
The same internet content filter for elementary-age children should not be used for those in high school. For example, high schoolers may need to make an iMovie on a topic related to World War II. Images related to the Nazis, Holocaust, D-Day, or the atomic bomb would be appropriate for this age level, but not necessarily for someone in kindergarten.
A compromise must be reached between communities, teachers, school boards, parents, and students, all which should give input to local governing body, which should have the final say. 14,000 books were removed in Florida passed HB 1467, the Curriculum Transparency Bill, which allows a book to be removed even if parents object.
Iowa's Mason City Community School District's ChatGPT determined what books should be banned in schools by limiting the criteria, quote, "does not include any descriptions or visual depictions of the sex act." This makes the process more objective, as artificial intelligence programs such as ChatGPT are when prompted, and partially human emotion and perspective.
We the People could similarly use a three-part obscenity test, as defined by Miller v. California, 1973, that weighs sexual content against its political or literary value in order to protect the future intellectual freedom of students.
Wow.
All right, so...
Chair, you come in first.
Yeah. That was, again, about four minutes exactly. I forgot to give you guys a one-minute warning, sorry. So I just thought we'd just do one sample follow-up question, just so you can see how kind of the back and forth go, and so it's always, the topics are always tackled as a group, which is great, and so they can build off of each other. So you guys ready for one follow-up question? So should we have a national standard for content in schools, or should it be left up to local authorities?
Yeah, so I would say that I think that it should be left up to local authorities, because even state is too broad, by my opinion, such as like here in Auburn. I mean, we interviewed our librarian, and she said that we have never banned a book, even though it's been tried. But yet in Bay Path, that is very different. So like, differing from school to school, even like within states, I think would be the best way moving forward.
I'm gonna have to slightly disagree, because I believe that it should be a statewide issue, as different states may have different cultural and ethical beliefs, because the southern states and the northern states may have different beliefs.
I would like to add on to that. So basically, I believe that, I do agree with my colleague here that's saying it varies state by state because of many different beliefs, but in Florida, there, in the Florida County, a district banned 1,000 books, over 1,000 books, and they banned encyclopedias and dictionaries, which I believe shouldn't be allowed. That's, I think there should be a regulation between state and federal laws combined. There should be a balance between the two.
Although I agree with both Vinnie and Alex, in a sense, I'm going to more so agree with Lexi, because although obscenity is defined federally by Miller v. California, I believe that it should be more local, because in Iowa's Mason City School District, they had first used ChatGPT, as discussed in our speech, to define it by whether it's graphic or not. But then Iowa Senate File 496 ended up taking over that and banning all books that had any mention of sexuality, gender identity, in all their schools. So even though on, by individual schools, that district tried to do their part, the state then took over and just got rid of all the work they put into that.
I disagree with Morgan. I think it should be more of a state issue, because I think everybody in the state should have equal education, and if one particular town is not giving access to a book, I think that restricts other people from other towns having access to the same information.
Great. So that's a flavor for follow-up, and then that goes on for about eight minutes. So, good job, guys.
Amazing.
Super hard.
Yeah, and the questions, I know Amy passed out the questions to you. I mean, they are, especially this year, as we're going through them, they are really difficult questions, and especially Unit 1 questions were extremely difficult. The Unit 4 questions were extremely difficult. So again, I, it's not some, these aren't necessarily questions that you can just Google, like, it takes a lot of putting together tons of different skills and resources throughout all of high school, and that's one of the reasons why I love We the People so much, because of course, it's not just, it's not just us helping, it's really the whole school community helping and putting all the skills together. So really, really proud of these students, and if they wanna come up to the microphone, they'll be happy to answer your questions. Jordan, if you wanna come up first, and then if you guys all wanna come up behind Jordan, Bella, if you wanna come up as well.
Super hard.
So Jordan is the Unit 6 captain, and will be happy to answer anything you'd like to know.
Any questions? Through the chair, I do. How, or when do you guys get the questions? How long do you have to actually sit, prepare?
Yeah, so we had about a month. We started at the beginning of January, and then the questions were passed out, and captains were delegated by Mr. Kennard. We then, we then went into research, which took us, for each speech, we spent about a week on. The first speech we spent a little longer, because it was, we were kinda getting the feel for it. We then researched for about two days, and then created a rough draft of our speech, and then by Friday, we would have a full-completed speech.
Very impressive.
Yeah.
Very, very impressive. So do you guys all like speak at some point, or do you pick like a team? And if so, how do you pick five people out of the whole group?
So the teams were based off of a Google form that was sent out. It was which topic you believed was more suitable for your, like, your, what you would like to talk about. So that was sent out, and then the teams were given to us at the beginning of the month, and everyone in their speech, I had personally seven people in my cap, in my group. All of them had to speak once in the speech, at least, and then all of them also would have to speak in follow-ups. If you didn't, they would be, points would be deducted.
Okay. Wow. Is this everyone's first time doing this?
Yes, you're only allowed to do it once.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
How'd it feel being in there, doing it?
It was scary. The first speech was very, very scary, but then as you got more comfortable, it went a lot better.
Wow, that's impressive, because to me, this is scary, so I can't imagine going through that. Each, each and every single one of you, you guys were very impressive.
Yeah.
Well done.
Very much.
That's incredible.
Did any of you just talk about, so you didn't start this way, right? So this is, this is the product of all of your hard work.
Yes.
So when you think back to when you started, how does that make you feel about participating in this, I guess, and about yourself?
Personally, I feel a lot more comfortable public speaking. Before this, I didn't have much experience. I had a little bit, because I am the vice president of the class, so I have to speak in front of the class frequently, but as I grew in this, I think my speaking abilities have become a lot better. I'm more comfortable on my feet, and especially with the follow-up questions, they really help to guide you to be more comfortable in, in more, less-prepared circumstances.
And it's not often that, well, I shouldn't say that. It's impressive to hear young people talk so eloquently about current topics, right? So how do you see this informing? Because we have lots of adults that aren't informed about current topics. How do you see this translating to the rest of your lives, I guess?
Yeah, I think We the People, and especially AP Government as a whole, has helped me to become more comfortable with current events. We do a flat, a piece of worksheet about once, once a week, maybe a little more, and it's, you pick from the newspapers that we get by, from the office every morning, and you go through our topics, and you pick which one you think is more, is most interesting to you, and then you fill out the sheet, and it's about asking about, about like what the article is about and how it affects you, and why you think it's important. And I think that has made me more aware of the news and what is going on around me, and We the People has also made me more comfortable with that as well.
Excellent. I have one more question. Can I ask one more? So another thing that we work a lot on, right, is what's true.
Yeah.
So has this helped you address any of that, or...
Definitely. My speech was about the current state of the world, and we talked a lot about fake news and social media and how that affects news. I think globalization has also played a big role, because we look at other countries who don't, don't have the access to news as we do. For example, in the Philippines, they, they're, Google is essentially Facebook, and that is all they have to research things, and we have a free internet. We don't have any restrictions on that, and I think that it's a lot harder for us to, or it's hard for everyone to figure out what is true, but we have a lot more sources that we can use.
Excellent.
Wow.
Did anyone, anyone else have anything to add to any of those? Go ahead up to, yeah, that's fine.
I just wanna say through the chair that what you guys are doing is amazing, and as an educator myself and a history teacher, like, I'm so impressed, but I also think for your teachers, like, it's extremely commendable. These kids are very eloquent, they know how to do their research, and you're doing a great job, so.
Yeah, I'm sure it was a big-time commitment on your behalf as well.
So thank you for that, and...
It's amazing.
They're a really great group.
Yeah. Any of the other students, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I feel like, okay, kind of going into this, I have a, I have a decent amount of public speaking experience, and I love public speaking, like, it makes me feel so good. And I also have a good amount of history background, because the Supreme Court is one of my biggest passions. So I really wanted Unit 3, because it has a lot to do with that kind of stuff, but I was really happy to get Unit 5, because who doesn't love the Bill of Rights?
We all should.
We all should. I, like, going into this, I felt like confident with my knowledge and confident with my ability to speak, but like, I learned so much about like being a leader and working together with people, and how like we all came together, and I'm so proud of our group, and how we were able to work together, to come together, and I feel like I learned so much about communication, collaboration, and like preparing for something like this, and that was just such a valuable experience, and our teachers helped us so much, and like, I, thank you, guys. It was wonderful. And I would love nothing more than to spend a Saturday talking about government, but I know that that might not be true for everybody, and we just all came together.
The chair, is that your goal, to be a judge someday?
Um, I mean, I kind of go back and forth. Every time I go to physics, I'm like, "Engineering, Ebert, you're the best. I wanna be civil engineer." And then I go to God, and I'm like, "Wait a minute. No, no." So I feel like I'm really passionate about the environment, and I would like to work as like an international lawyer, and like have an engineering background, so that I can work on clean energy solutions, mostly abroad, particularly in Western Africa.
Good for you.
Yeah.
That's amazing. I hope you do that.
The training for that is in Hawaii, just so you know. If you were wondering, my friend just went through it.
I was wondering if there was time to go back to a question that Dr. Chamberlain asked. When you said when you started, I kinda thought of that, even farther back to kindergarten, I went to Bryn Mawr, of course, when you were there as principal, and I wanted to say, my whole childhood, I was the kind of person that were like, "Well, you're gonna make a great lawyer" every time I talked to an adult, because just the opinions I had. And it was so excellent to have an, almost like an outlet for that kind of thing, for that kind of commitment, as Lexi said, to the humanities, to history, to facts, and to everything, and it was just a really great opportunity to share that, like, as a group. Because like even Lexi, like, I feel like as a group, we had just great chemistry and great collaboration, and it was really, it was fun. And it was really, it was fun.
We literally saw our piece and we saw the chemistry that they had.
Yeah, definitely.
It's an important lesson. It's an important lesson to learn how to collab collaborate with and work with people that you might not necessarily work with. So that's a really great lesson that you guys learned. Maybe we'll see some of you guys up here one day.
Great child. They're doing bigger and better things than this. Not you, but me. Be a superintendent. Definitely go for that. Chair of school committee. I don't know. Yeah, small town politics. But I have to say, like, you guys are role models for adults because you were able to disagree with each other and still be supportive of your own opinions and without putting someone down. There are a lot of adults that cannot do that. So that's just kudos all around. I mean, I can't believe it. You guys are amazing, so.
Well, you make us very proud.
Yes, very.
Thank you for coming. You can all come up and just give us a handshake and take the walk and then you can go on your merry way. How's that, you guys?
Yeah.
Good luck next year.
Nicely done.
As well. Good for you.
Nicely done.
Great job.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
Nicely done.
Wow.
Nicely done. Nice to see you. Nice to see you. Nicely done.
Great job.
Excellent job. Beautiful.
All right.
Good job.
Awesome job.
Ooh, that's hard. I looked at that, I was like, ooh. Great job.
Nice. I don't know how you have time to do all that.
Nicely done.
I know.
Oh, my goodness, that's okay. Feel better. Feel better.
Thank you, Mom.
Find the minutes, right?
Excellent job.
I think. Is it all seniors that do?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah. Amazing.
Yes. I'm kind of jealous.
Oh, I'm just saying, we're going to see, we're going to see.
Not that smart when I was a senior.
Spencer, could I ask?
No. Just saying. We're interested in my.
I was just curious, it's like they're all seniors, but do they start? Like, are there any juniors or sophomores? Do they work up to it or?
No, you can only participate once. So you have to, um, other schools do do it, not senior year. There are other schools who do it sophomore, junior. A few schools, so this is a national competition. So there are a few freshman teams, but most of them are juniors or seniors. Yeah, yeah.
Great.
That's amazing.
That's a great opportunity for seniors.
Excellent job.
Yes.
Bring me.
There you go. Yeah, you guys don't.
Yeah, you'd want to.
We'll make you stay.
Guys, over to your home.
Our speeches will not be nearly as.
Thank you.
I know. You would learn, my guy.
We're not going to reference.
Have a good night. Next year.
I'm safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, Dion. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm super impressed.
Yeah.
That was amazing.
It was really impressive.
I don't know how they got second place.
I mean, can you imagine?
Seriously.
So it was such an interesting topic, too.
Yeah.
Because it is, it is happening everywhere.
Little bit of an it topic, you know? I mean, when you start in September, that's, you know, what people start talking about.
Yeah.
Um, it's cool.
All right, well, move on to much less exciting things. Unfinished business. Unfinished business. The first item on here is again, the new field policy draft. This is our fourth reading. As the last time, I needed to do a couple of additions. So you will see on the one, two, three, four, the fifth page at the bottom, there's something in red.
Yes.
So there was the initial policy had that people were going to be required to get insurance for an international trip and getting legal counsel. We can't really require people to do that. We can urge them to do that. And so this wording was changed to determine that all optional insurance insurance has been secured by those wishing to obtain the insurance. And families who choose not to obtain trip insurance must note that they have, they have declined the insurance on the permission form. So that was the only one change since the last time. And then you will also see in addition, at the end, after the whole policy, there is a new emergency form that's been created. This front part, for the most part, is very similar to what we've had. But if you look on the, if you flip it over, there is a liability statement along with they have to either check that they've purchased it or they've elected to decline the trip insurance. And if appropriate, student signature, which in most cases for an international trip it would be, and then the parent signature as well. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. We've looked at this a number of times, but I thought it was worthwhile to kind of wait for that legal counsel on the piece of the insurance.
Yeah. So I don't think we can force insurance on even iPads anymore, right?
We can't.
Yes.
No, we cannot. We can encourage and cajole and suggest and recommend, but we cannot force anyone to do that, so.
Great.
Through the chair, I like the hold harmless. I think that's important because then we are not at, we're not liable, so that's good.
Cool. Yeah, all right. And you're seeking an action on that?
I am seeking approval finally this evening.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated field trip policy J J H as presented by the superintendent.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, there's the votes. Thank you.
And the next item in unfinished business is the school year calendar for 2024, 2025. The last time we met, there were a couple of changes that had to be made. So first, in November, we had had November 19th as parent teacher conferences on the 20th, which is a Wednesday. We are moving to designate Tuesday as the day for faculty meetings. And we normally tie those two together because then there's time in the afternoon after school of after school hours for teachers to meet with families. So we moved that from the 20th to the 19th.
Okay.
And the other question that came up the last time was a date when we won't have school for our current, for, well, for our next year kindergarten kids to allow for screening for our incoming kindergarteners. So that's been designated as April 18th. The two other items that I want to bring to your attention that are tentative, you'll see on October 15th, evening parent conferences at the high school and January 28th at the high school. These are very tentative dates. They will not be on the final draft right now. But what we figured out this year is that we've always held conferences toward the end of November, which is toward the end of our trimester. As you can see in this calendar, the last day of the trimester will be November 26th. And so I guess I was a little slow on the uptake, but I asked the question like, isn't that late to be having conferences at the high school when you only have a week left to the trimester? And now your kids are going to change. And seemingly, yes, that timing was not really a good, a good time for high school folks at least. What they, I think, would prefer is to either meet earlier in the tri where they have almost like an expectations evening, an open house evening to kind of let families know what the expectation is for the course. And you know, at the high school, right, we offer so many different things. And so looking at potentially that we have something in the be, we do things a little differently for the high schools. Let's say they have an evening, maybe mid September even for the families of try one kids. And then again, in January for families of trimester two or even late December. We, that's why these dates, those dates aren't set in stone. But we are also exploring on November 19th. If that's the case, if we move to those things, that November 19th, potentially the high school students would have school all day. That is finals week, leading up to the end of the tri. But there are some logistics that have to go into that yet. So those are the conversations that are happening now. And certainly dates for those evenings would be shared if that's the way that we go. But other than that, the dates for the calendar itself, for most part, are are set.
Yeah, okay. My only thing would be I would do some kind of shading on that kindergarten screening day.
Okay.
Just so people know. I don't know, it's or at least bold underneath or something.
Okay. Because the only thing with shading, right, is then people think it's everybody and it's a tricky day.
Yeah.
We have to be really precise with our communication about that because people get easily confused.
So maybe just do that in red or something, like some different color, just so it stands out.
Yep, we can do that.
Um, because that could affect, you know, siblings and everything else. Who knows? So. Um, all right, and I'm seeking a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 school year calendar as presented by the superintendent.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Amen.
All right. That's done.
That's great.
Yeah. Um, okay, we'll move on to new business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next one is really for informational purposes. We were recently notified by DESI that will be considered as a whole harmless district in relation to our chapter 70 money that we'll receive for FY25. Of the 319 districts statewide, 212 received the minimum increase, which is the whole harmless increase of $30 per student. Additionally, we have a decline in our enrollment of 55 students from last school year, another trend that we talked about the last time when we went over the NESDEC enrollment report. So that means that the change in chapter 70 fundy from FY24 was $15,134,321. Will go to $15,205,331, which is only an increase of $71,010. The increase that we received in FY24 from FY23 was $1.1 million. So the increase that we're seeing is significant. I mean, the the decrease in the increase, I should say, is significant and will certainly have an impact on our FY25 budget. The town is in the process of meeting with all the departments. We've had our initial meeting with Mr. Kaznovich and Assistant Town Manager Vecchio. But there are a number of other departments that still have to meet with him until we get some more firm guidance with what, how things will go. But we've been open with them, but wanted to share with you that that is another hit. Seemingly, there is an increase in our, what we're, will Oda Bay path as well.
Assessment, yes.
The assessment, so. And that's based on a bit of an increase. There are a few variables that go into how that assessment is calculated, but there will be an increase there as well.
Does that, that doesn't come on our budget, though. It goes before the town is.
The town actually pays the assessment, but it, you know, it's for school children.
The town has to pay it and that goes up.
Yeah.
Right, that's more money, or less money that's available.
Yeah, I actually watched a couple other school committee meetings from districts around and they, everyone's taking a hit on the chapter 70, so it's definitely.
When I first saw it, I couldn't believe it. And and they only sent out the information about us. And then about a week later, we got the listing of all the districts. And then I was like, oh, it's not just us. But you don't know that until they send that information out, so, yeah.
Yeah. Bummer, okay.
Yeah.
Not what you wanted to see, but.
No, it is not what we wanted to see, that's for sure.
All right.
Uh, the next item is a report out on special education significant disproportionality. We've shared this with you before. IDEA requires that we measure whether students from certain racial and ethnic groups are disproportionately receiving special education services in certain categories and whether they're placed in certain settings, for instance, sub separate settings, and disproportionately receiving certain, certain types of disciplinary removals. Auburn was not found to have this disproportionality for the 2022, 2023 school year, and that's a good thing. You know, these things can happen sometimes when you have smaller subgroups of individuals as well. But this is, we have not had any. So there is a reference guide in your packet. It is a little bit tedious to read, but you'll see the reports are included as well with nothing highlighted as being an issue. So just wanted to share.
Yeah, I did look through it. Yeah, there are formulas. I felt like it was third grade common core math or something. Understand it at all. But what I did notice was the increase in emotional disabilities from over the years past, which is sad to see, but you know, we are addressing it, which is good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Yeah. Um, all right, any questions or comments concerning that?
No.
Great.
Nope. Uh, the next item is just to let folks know that kindergarten preschool registration is now open for the 24, 25 school year. Folks are encouraged to go to our website. I will have a large section in my newsletter this week that will go out that has all the links to everything, but it is open. So we encourage everyone that when they can to please register, spread the word to folks that they know that may have a child who's eligible to come into our preschool or into one of our kindergarten classrooms.
Great. All right, next new batch.
Next new batch, yeah. Likewise, uh, this Friday, the information will go out for bus applications for the 24, 25 school year. We're using the same format we used last year where folks fill out a Google form. They do have to return the payment in a timely manner. The rates have not changed, which I've included that rate schedule in your packet as well. So if they pay by May 1st, everything stays the same as it was. And there is a graduated fee for each month after that. This process really did help us last year with not getting a huge number of applications in August. So the planning was much, much better. It allowed our staff to get things, you know, you have to clean up the data. You have to organize the data. You have to print the bus passes. You have to do all of that. They've also put together a great process for the distribution of those where folks now come and pick them up here. And there's been a really good response to that. A lot fewer errors with kids on the wrong bus or the wrong route because they have a nice conversation. Mandy and Caitlin and the other folks on the team here to kind of make sure that people are where they, kids are where they need to be. So that's helped us out a lot. So hopefully this will go well and I won't have to haunt everyone too, too much throughout the spring to do this and and fill this out, so.
I just have, through the chair, just one question with the bus. So a few people have asked me, is there a grid that's in the application this year on? The high school gets picked up and dropped off at this time, approximate the middle school? Because they have now children that are now across the schools. And they're like, how can I pick up? Do I have to get after school at the, at, you know, Pakicog or Bryn Mawr so that I can pick up at the middle school? But when does the bus get to my house for my high schooler? Is there a way or an approximate, like, we pick up at the high school at this time? Plan accordingly, like kind of a deal?
So Mrs. Worsbicki can can verify this, but when they, when we put out the bus routes, it it shows when it starts.
Starts in the morning.
Okay. So they'll give you a start time, but they're not going to give you stop times after that. We have a hard enough time with them giving us the, with giving out the one time when things start. Because people are like, yeah, but when are they going to get to my stop? Right, right. You know, we don't know what the, you know, there could be another bus.
I think it was just more of they have a middle schooler. So they're like, is it better to pick them up, do the after school program and not do the bus? Like, I think that's what they're trying to like, how can I get across Auburn? You know, and I was just like.
It's always fun to try them.
I mean, I'm down for the cause, but you know, let's be safe. There are lights. There are children walking, you know?
And certainly they can always reach out to one of the schools or to us for a specific situation that could be tricky.
That's what I always, I'm like, we're not here to like make your six year old stand outside your house because you're not home because like, come on now.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, so I just didn't know if there was an about.
There is an about. So if you look at, yeah, there is an about. And we know when we dismiss in the afternoon, right?
Right, right.
So about same kind of thing.
Correct.
But that's about as close as we can get.
Okay.
But each bus, like I know my daughter is like bus five or whatever. You get, it says every stop and around what time here the kids land or take off. And it's pretty accurate. I mean, the first couple of days are a little.
Yeah.
I think it's just they're going to the middle school. You still got two, you know, at Bryn Mawr or.
We used to have a transfer bus way back in the day. I don't think we do that anymore. We'd take kids from like the middle school up to pack so that a parent doing pickup could get all the kids.
That would have been amazing.
Yeah. That's gonna be so hard to do that.
Yeah.
My daughter got that.
Yeah. Yeah, through the chair, my daughter takes the bus from Swiss to pack and then I pick them both up there.
Oh, so we do still.
That does.
Not the middle.
Oh, no, but she already has, but she already has a bus pass. So if she didn't have a bus pass, she can't do that.
Oh, right. Yeah. Um, so is this going home in backpacks or online or?
No, it's going to go out online.
Okay, I would say we still do like the Unipay, right? So I would add that on there.
It's all explained.
Okay.
So we have, that's just the rates. Then we have another whole thing about the regulations and rules and all of that and how that all works and distances and information about that. And then we have the form that gets filled out. So that's, that'll all go out in one fell swoop.
And then if I recall, at the bottom of the form, it says you can pay through Unipay.
Yes.
And then there's a link, so you can click right there and it's fabulous.
Yes.
And the link is also right on our website.
Oh, it's great.
Page.
And so all of that's going to be online as well.
Straight up.
But I would just, through the chair, I'd also just remind people that even though they fill out the form, if you need to pay, you're not considered offset until you make the payment. So that was one, even if you give the form, if the payment isn't with it, then we don't count it as being complete.
Okay. All right.
Also in your packet, you'll find the annual report for Assabet Valley Collaborative. Um, again, this is for informational purposes because we are a member of their collaborative. I don't think there was anything unusual reported, uh, in this one compared to years past. So.
I noticed you're on the board of directors now.
Yes.
An honor.
We're all, yes.
All right.
And the last item for me this evening is, um, the hiring committee. So as you know, Mrs. Worsbicky is going to leave us at the end of this school year, um, after a number of years of dedicated service to us. And I, I will say to me personally, as a new superintendent, she's been a terrific support for me. Um, but wanting you to know that we potentially will be posting her position before the next meeting. Um, so I would look for any committee member who may be willing to sit on the, um, on the interview committee.
Any takers?
I'd be happy to. Anybody?
Sam wants it.
No, not everyone. Speak up all once. I'd be happy to.
My schedule's full, so I.
I would be happy to. I'd be more than happy.
If Sam can't do it, do it for some reason. I, I'm happy to step in.
I'd be happy to.
In the past, we were doing two.
We were.
Yeah. So I don't know. It's up to you real.
I think it's, I think one is.
One. Okay.
I think that's fine.
All right. Well, Brooke, you're an alternate then.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we should make a motion to.
Yep. I'll make a motion to appoint.
Sam Refill.
To the interview committee. Did I just say the same one?
No, you said it right.
To the interview committee for the next business manager of the Auburn Public Schools.
We get a second that. All those in favor?
Aye. I don't think I can second that.
All righty.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Dr. Chamberlain. So more information to come. Sorry. Thank you for your kind words. And it has been a pleasure serving Auburn Public Schools for these past years.
Yeah, you've been wonderful.
I've enjoyed.
You're not gone yet, though. So I'm not giving you kind words.
We're going to work right to the end.
If I have anything to say about.
We're gonna, we're gonna tire to the death.
You've had a wonderful committee to work with. Through the years, we've had great committees and I'm just very thankful. So.
Good. Oh.
We're thankful for you.
Good all for you.
Your staff as well. Everyone's awesome. So thank you very much.
Yeah, that's great. We miss you already.
All right. So we don't have Mr. Keller here.
But I will report out for him. Uh, he did have a, uh, something that he had to go to. So, um, he wanted to share out that beginning this past fall, we started a three-year partnership with DESI's Social Emotional Behavior Academy, um, to try and help our schools teams to foster a joyful, culturally sustaining learning environment. So this goes hand in hand with the work we've done around our strategic plan, um, and within the buildings with our school improvement teams. So we had a kickoff meeting that Alan and I attended, uh, that included districts from across the Commonwealth. Um, this is going to help us frame a district level understanding of effect, an effective multi-level, multi-tiered system of supports related to social, emotional and behavioral, um, needs of our students. Uh, and he wanted to share that the team has, is from a wide range of roles across the district and include Mrs. Patilities, who's, uh, the assistant principal at Swiss, uh, Ms. Ellen Simino, a teacher, Ms. Karen Ballway, Ms. Amy Peck, Ms. Eileen Torini, Ms. Kendra Beveridge, Guidance Counselor, Mr. Matt Carlson, Ms. Ariella Emanuel, Mr. Andrew Shore, uh, Brooke Beverly, Joe Kalinowski, Chrissy Fords, Lynn Phelan and Melissa LeBeau. So that's a really nice sampling of folks and they've already had several meetings. So that's terrific. They get monthly support from a coach, um, and ongoing webinars and professional development. So they've been meeting weekly, um, kind of talking through right now strengths and weaknesses. We appreciate the effort of the team, uh, and we think this is going to be a very nice enhancement to work already in place and really get us to a terrific, uh, spot in the next couple of years. So, yeah, it's a great program.
Well, thank you to all those, uh, staff members going above and beyond. Karen, I know you're involved. I see your name pop up a lot lately. So thank you for your involvement.
It's actually pretty fun. Um, we're, we're, our next step is to establish goals for, um, after we've evaluated our strengths and weaknesses. So.
Awesome. Yeah. Well, thank you. That's great.
Look forward to the future.
All right. We'll move on to business and financial report.
Well, the first item is a bid award and contract for installation of a new resilient running track surface at the high school. The bid for the installation of a new track at Auburn High School was posted electronically on December 27th by Project Dog Incorporated. It's a company that we use that does the electronic, um, so we don't have to do it personally and in person. Um, and so it's all done electronically. And it closed on January 22nd. Um, East Coast Seal Coating Incorporated was the sole bidder and came in with a base price of $256,000 with an additional cost of $25,000 to include alternate number one, which are the D boxes, which are the two areas on the ends of the football field. Um, when putting the bid together, Mr. Fahy and I weren't sure if we were be able to afford the whole project and we didn't want to delay, delay it. So we put it out with an alternate so we could choose, like if we had the money. Um, the district has worked with East Coast Seal Coating previously and their references were all very good when Mr. Fahy reached out. Uh, the project funds have been previously allocated through the capital improvement budget and voted on by town meeting. The district is seeking the committee's approval to award the bid and then proceed to enter into a contract with East Coast Seal Coating, East Coast Seal Coating Incorporated for the project. So I'd be looking for your support and a motion for Dr. Chamberlain to sign the, um, contract.
Okay. Do we have any questions from anyone? So this money's already approved?
Yes, it's our capital improvement projects. We have the money. Um, it's been in a series of a couple of years that we've been putting the money together and we have a complete amount to cover the cost.
All right.
That's one of the things. We, we put things out to bid, but we don't go out to bid unless we know we have the money to do it.
Yeah.
So that's why we were trying to put the, um, the alternate one because we weren't sure. Cause we're, we're finding more and more that things are coming in that increased costs. Like you think it's going to be one thing and it comes in way higher. And as this, like we only had one bidder. So, you know, it's, it's bidding is getting hard too. You're not always getting, getting a bunch of people to bid, especially we find that with transportation as well. So, but yeah.
This is another example of like, uh, when we saw the increased costs in some of our maintenance, uh, contracted services, right, for maintenance and that kind of thing in this budget that we've put forward. It's the same kind of thing. Whenever you're trying to do a big project like this, you just really don't know where the costs are going to come in. Uh, things are so high right now. Yeah.
All right, good. Yeah, I was nervous about bringing forward another request to town meeting.